That's pretty close. The December tenth, two thousand thirteen, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section thirty-three thirteen point one five of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Mr. Mihawk.
Here.
Mr. Sparassia.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with all dignity and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the December tenth, two thousand thirteen, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda Systems, known as Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Channel ninety-six in Mentor and Channel twenty-two in Mentor-on-the-Lake. If you would, please place your mobile phones on silent mode during the meeting. Thank you. First order of business is approval of the minutes for the November nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any deletions or corrections, Mr. Wilson? All set? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Tuttle.
Abstain, I missed the meeting.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I apologize. Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
And now we have our first hearing of the public on any item that is on this evening's agenda. And seeing no takers, we'll move right into superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items five A one through five A three.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Is that Tom?
Tom.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, we couldn't be more proud of how well our girls' cross-country, boys' soccer and football teams have competed this fall. To go all the way to state competition is outstanding. They have generated, each three of those teams have generated so much excitement in the schools and in our community. We want to thank them tonight for their competitive spirit and for their sportsmanship. Mr. Wade, along with Mr. Casella and Mr. Tuttle, will start the presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. We've had a tremendous fall here at Mentor High, as Mr. Miller just said. In addition to the teams we're honoring here tonight, the following teams have also won league or district titles. The volleyball team was NOC Lake Division Champions. The boys' cross-country team were district champions. The boys' golf team were district qualifiers, and the girls' soccer team was also district champions. So on top of the three teams we've had here tonight, we had a fantastic fall. So tonight, we do honor three teams who reached the highest level of competition in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. All of them have represented Mentor High with excellent skill and sportsmanship, and they should be commended. First up is our girls' cross-country team, led by head coach, Mr. Bill Dennison. Coach Dennison would join me here on stage. The girls continued their winning tradition by improving all season. They peaked at the right time as the girls won the district title at Lakeland to begin the postseason. From there, they traveled to the regional meet, and with their top-four finish, qualified again for the state meet in Columbus. I know from talking to Coach Dennison that the girls worked extremely hard this season to meet a goal, and at the state meet, they represented the Cardinals in fine fashion. Members of the team that traveled to the state meet, and ladies, if you'd join us when I call your name up here on stage and then line up here in front of the Board of Education, I'd appreciate that. Kinsey Robinson.
Yeah.
Peggy Magrow.
Yeah.
Rosie Magrow.
Yeah.
Jennifer Mahal.
Congratulations.
Madeline Mahal.
Well done.
Carolyn Spleeter.
Congratulations.
Morgan Stewart.
Congratulations.
Elise Hansen.
Congratulations.
Elizabeth Gilreath.
Wonderful season.
Avery McGeeery.
Great job. Thanks for a great season.
And Samantha Meyer.
Great job. Thank you for a wonderful season.
Ladies and gentlemen, our state qualifying girls' cross-country team.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Next, we have our boys' soccer team, led by head coach, Chris Payne.
If Coach Payne would join me up here on stage, please. This year's addition of the boys' soccer team won the Valley Division of the Northeast Ohio Conference and finished their regular season undefeated. The Cardinals won the district championship with a thrilling overtime shootout over Shaker Heights.
Great job.
They won in the regional semifinal in two overtimes, one-nothing over St. Edward, and then won the regional championship, one-nothing over Massillon Jackson. They advanced to the state final four and won that semifinal game over White House Anthony Wayne in another one-to-nothing game. This run of thrilling, well-played games entertained all of Mentor. The boys advanced to the state title game, and although they fell to Mason High School one-nothing, many compliments were heard about how the boys carried themselves in defeat, and all of Mentor should be proud of their state runner-up finish. The members of our boys' soccer team this year: Papo Bojic. Ryan Brass.
Congratulations.
Nathan Carey.
Congratulations.
Jeff Davis.
Congratulations.
Colin Eady.
Thank you for a great season.
Eric Goldstein.
Congratulations.
Kevin Ruska.
Thank you for a great season.
Patrick Iskra.
Thanks for a great season.
Jake Lombardo.
Congratulations.
Matt Markowitz.
Thanks for a great season.
Adrian Miller.
Thanks for a great season.
Alexander Monreal.
Congratulations.
Mike Nicholson.
Thanks for a great season.
Tim Knoll.
Thanks for a great season.
Evan Powell.
Congratulations.
Kurt Rainey.
Thank you for a great season.
Tyler Thompson.
Thanks for a great season.
Brock Venman.
Thanks for a great season.
Nathan Volker.
Congratulations.
And Alan Wardiner.
Thanks for a great season. Thanks for a great season. Thanks for a great season. Great season.
Ladies and gentlemen, our boys' soccer team, state runners-up this year.
Thanks for a great season.
Before I let the boys step down, I do want to recognize one thing that just came out yesterday. One of our players, Jake Lombardo, was named a high school All-American for his season this year, so congratulations, Jake. Thank you, boys. led by head coach, Steve Trivisano. Coach Triv would join us here on stage. This year's Cardinals won the NOC Valley Division and finished the regular season with a nine-and-one record. The Cards started off the playoffs with shutout wins over Brunswick and Stowe. In the snow in the regional final, the Cards took down St. Ignatius to advance to the state final four. In the state semifinal, Mentor defeated St. Ed's to advance to the state title game. In a fantastic state championship game, the Cards ran out of time and fell to Cincinnati Moller to take home the state runner-up title. The Cards had a fantastic season and gave us many exciting moments throughout the year. This team should be proud of everything they have accomplished. I know the time and work that they put in throughout the year in order to represent Mentor High in the fashion that they did, and I congratulate them for that. With us tonight are senior members of this year's team. Kent Berger.
Congratulations.
Ravon Bowles.
Congratulations.
Jacob Crawford.
Congratulations.
Nick Fuller.
Great season, thank you.
Brandon Fritz.
Great season, thank you.
Todd Green.
Good luck.
Austin Hankins.
Great season, thank you.
Matt Kobastich.
Great season, thank you.
Connor Krasansek.
Great season, thank you.
Johannes Lemke.
Great season.
Delvon Maddox.
Great season, thank you.
Keith McCormick.
Great season, thank you.
Mason McHenry.
Great season.
Justin McMahon.
Great season.
Andrew Megling.
Great season, thank you.
Mitch Morrison.
Congratulations.
Mike Music.
Thanks for a great season.
Our senior trainer, David Osborne.
Thank you for a great season.
Zach Parisi.
Great season, thank you.
James Chatsko.
Thanks for a great season.
Corey Plavkin.
Great watching you guys.
Kaia Powell.
Congratulations.
Brandon Ray.
Great season.
Isaiah Stewart.
Thanks for a great season.
Jimmy Swider.
Congratulations.
Jake Bernardelli.
Thank you for a great season.
And Matt Zolcheck.
Thank you for a great season.
Our two thousand thirteen Mentor Cardinal Football Team.
Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to take a five-minute recess so folks can get back to their evening activities and the kids can go and do their homework. Sure you have a lot of it, right? We'll call the meeting back to order. Mr. Miller, if you could continue, please.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I have asked Mr. Wade to report on the transition process to the Greater Cleveland Conference Athletic League.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, or Mr. Wilson. It's my pleasure to be in front of you tonight to introduce to Greater Cleveland Conference, or the GCC as it's formerly known, Mentor, Medina, Illyria, Solon, Shaker Heights, Brunswick, Strongsville High Schools for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school years would like to form a new league. We're asking for your approval for this league to protect the interests of our student athletes and coaches, as seven schools left the Northeast Ohio Conference to join other leagues. We feel the GCC school's strong educational athletic programs provide our school the opportunity to provide a rich and exciting relationship that'll help our student athletes and community maintain the traditions of excellence we have come accustomed. Furthermore, we feel the creation of this league will strengthen and create more traditional rivalries and create a premier league in Northeast Ohio. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much. With that, Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of the resolution to join the Greater Cleveland Conference Athletic League, beginning with the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. Just really quick, want to commend Mr. Wade and Mr. Casella for their involvement in getting the league reestablished. Spent countless hours and emails and communications with other athletic directors and principals. So, gentlemen, thanks for your work on that. Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval for the agreement for the Hiram House for the two thousand fourteen outdoor education for sixth-grade students.
So moved.
Second.
Am I allowed to do that?
Sure.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of the agreement for the Hiram House for the two thousand fourteen outdoor education for sixth-grade students.
So moved.
Second.
Am I allowed to do that?
Sure.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of agenda items C-one and C-two related to certified staff, and C-three and C-four related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of agenda items C-one and C-two related to certified staff, and C-three and C-four related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Moving on to item six, under new business, I'd like to appoint Mary Briner as president pro tem for the January fourteenth, two thousand fourteen organizational meeting. And then, you know, do you want to vote on that?
Your preference, not necessary, but if you want, you can declare this chair.
You want to vote on that or do you make a difference?
Hmm, I'm sure.
Not really.
So declared.
And then, we'll take a motion to approve the January fourteenth, two thousand fourteen meeting schedule as shown, six-thirty PM for the organizational meeting, six-forty-five for the tax budget meeting, and seven PM for the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes. And item B, legislative report, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Shaw, William Shaw, that is. First item on the legislative report I'd like to read, and that's on the Common Core. Recently, the Ohio School Board Association, Buckeye Association of School Board Administrators, and the Ohio Association of School Business Officials testified jointly in opposition to House Bill two-thirty-seven in the Ohio House Education Committee. House Bill two-thirty-seven is legislation that seeks to avoid the implementation of the Common Core state standards. Further, the three associations testified to their commitment to these higher standards for student learning. OSBA, BASA, and OASBO believe our students must be challenged with rigorous standards and their performance measured by equally rigorous assessments. Each association emphasized the significant time, effort, and resources that districts have spent preparing for these new standards, and how moving away from this concerted effort would represent a significant waste of precious resources. I'd also like to just spend a minute or two on the diabetes legislation. House Bill two-sixty-four is introduced as legislation that would put significant mandates on districts serving students with diabetes. School districts, this is an opinion, and this was expressed by the three associations, that school districts should not be mandated to monitor and medicate all diabetic students beyond the regular school day. Before and after school activities, under current federal law, Section five-oh-four plans allow for this on an individualized basis. The bill includes mandatory training for school employees and bus drivers who have diabetic students in their care during the school day or after-school activities. Volunteers could provide this care, however, school districts must have trained staff available with or without volunteers. It's just in the wrong direction there. The House Bill, or the federal law already covers that. To require your school bus drivers to be trained to handle this goes beyond the pale, I believe, and so do the three associations. So I just want to bring that up. It hasn't passed as yet. The three associations continue to work closely with the American Diabetes Association and other interested parties to settle this, so it's not put so much onus on employees such as school bus drivers who would be driving and transporting students after school. It's just opinion, but also hopefully it'll get brought down to something reasonable, so this mandate is not excessive. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much, Mr. Tuttle. And then, item C, we'll move to the podium. Okay, tonight, we take the opportunity to recognize two of our board members who will be leaving the board, Al Mihawk and Drew Sparassia. I can't say enough about these gentlemen. They stepped up at a very difficult time in the history of the Mentor School District and provided excellent service, excellent guidance, excellent vision, and, as Drew says, threw some spaghetti around and came up with some good ideas. Didn't always agree on everything, but it was always handled very, very professionally and very businesslike. And they both can be extremely proud of where we are today, because a lot of that of where we are is certainly due to their efforts. So I have some resolutions. First is for Mr. Mihawk. And it reads, whereas Alan J. Mihawk was appointed to the Board of Education at the February ninth, two thousand four Board of Education meeting, and has served continuously as a member of the Board of Education through the end of the current term, December thirty-one, two thousand thirteen. And whereas Andrew J. Sparassia was appointed to the Board of Education on March twenty-fourth, two thousand four, for a term that expired December thirty-one, two thousand seven, and was reappointed to the Board of Education on August twenty-third, two thousand eleven, for a term that expires December thirty-one, two thousand thirteen. And whereas Mr. Mihawk and Mr. Sparassia came forward in a time of fiscal crisis to offer their business and financial experiences and knowledge. And whereas Mr. Mihawk and Mr. Sparassia were instrumental in guiding the school district to the second fastest recovery from fiscal emergency in state of Ohio history. And whereas Mr. Mihawk and Mr. Sparassia have consistently dedicated themselves to providing the students of the school district the highest quality public education. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved, that the Mentor Exempt Village School District Board of Education recognize and commend Alan J. Mihawk and Andrew J. Sparassia for distinguished service to the Board of Education, the school district's communities, and the students of the Mentor Public School District. In witness thereof, we hereby affix our signatures on this tenth day of December, two thousand thirteen. Gentlemen.
Congratulations. Stay up here a second, if you will. Just a couple comments, if I may, just very quickly. Al, you and I reminisce, recently it was a snowy, cold February night in two thousand and four where we both attended a Board of Education meeting. I knew in advance I was going to be appointed as the CFO for the district. I think it was totally a surprise to you, but that same night, you were appointed to the Board of Education, and together, we've traveled through some tough times and some great times. You stepped forward when there was nothing for you to gain personally, but your sense of duty provided our school district with greatly needed business insights that helped move us from crisis to fiscal stability and to educational excellence. Thank you for your support and service. And Drew, I don't remember the forecast on the night when you were appointed, but as the resolution indicated, your passion for the school district and the children of our schools led you to step forward, not once, but twice, to provide your assistance as we again traveled some very difficult roads through fiscal crisis, to stability, to excellence. Your creativity, your vision were driving forces and helping to get us here today and pushing me and pushing others to not be satisfied with how things used to be. So it's been an honor to serve with you. I also thank you for your service and dedication.
I also want to give my thanks to these two gentlemen. Collectively, along with the other three board members, I have a lot to thank you both for, in terms of bringing me and my family to Mentor, and for putting this school district in a very good spot and putting me in a very good spot as superintendent. And I appreciate both of you having your trust and faith in me as a superintendent, and I thank you both very much.
Well, I wasn't planning on saying anything. It's been a quick ten years. I can't thank Matt, Jackie Hoynes, Dan. And what Dan didn't remind you, Dan, weren't you on crutches that night? Yes, I was. We said, who's this injured CFO we're hiring that can't even walk? But it's been a wonderful ten years. The time has flown by. I guess the thing I thought of that brought me back every time when we were up for election, my daughter, who's now a senior at OU, when that first, that same month of February when we, when I got appointed to the board, there was an emergency levy and it failed. And I went home, and my daughter, who was, God, that's ten years ago, so do the math, she was in grade school, said, why don't parents care about the kids in Mentor? And I didn't have an answer for her. And as we went through that process, and Drew and Bill, and Tom wasn't on the board at that time, can reminisce that when we had school board meetings, we were worried about things getting out of hand, and people were screaming at each other and pointing the finger, and that was a long time ago, and everybody used to say, after that...
Stay up here a second, if you will. Just a couple comments, if I may, just very quickly. Al, you and I reminisce recently. It was a snowy, cold February night in 2004 where we both attended a Board of Education meeting. I knew in advance I was going to be appointed as the CFO for the district. I think it was totally a surprise to you. But that same night, you were appointed to the Board of Education, and together, we've traveled through some tough times and some great times. You stepped forward when there was nothing for you to gain personally, but your sense of duty provided our school district with greatly needed business insights that helped move us from crisis to fiscal stability and to educational excellence. Thank you for your support and service. And Drew, I don't remember the forecast on the night when you were appointed, but as the resolution indicated, your passion for the school district and the children of our schools led you to step forward, not once, but twice, to provide your assistance as we again traveled some very difficult roads, through fiscal crisis, to stability, to excellence. Your creativity, your vision were driving forces and helping to get us here today and pushing me and pushing others to not be satisfied with how things used to be. So it's been an honor to serve with you. Also, thank you for your service and dedication.
I also want to give my thanks to these two gentlemen collectively, along with the other three board members. I have a lot to thank you both for in terms of bringing me and my family to Mentor and for putting this school district in a very good spot and putting me in a very good spot as superintendent. And I appreciate both of you having your trust and faith in me as a superintendent, and I thank you both very much.
Well, I wasn't planning on saying anything. It's been a quick 10 years. I can't thank Matt, Jackie Hoynes, Dan. And what Dan didn't remind you, Dan, weren't you on crutches that night?
Yes, I was.
We said, who's this injured CFO we're hiring that can't even walk? But it's been a wonderful 10 years. The time has flown by. I guess the thing I thought of that brought me back every time when we were up for election, my daughter, who's now a senior at OU, when that first, that same month of February when we, when I got appointed to the board, there was an emergency levy and it failed. And I went home, and my daughter, who was, God, that 10 years ago, so do the math, she was in grade school, said, why don't parents care about the kids in Mentor? And I didn't have an answer for her. And as we went through that process, and Drew and Bill and Tom wasn't on the board at that time, can reminisce that when we had school board meetings, we were worried about things getting out of hand, and people were screaming at each other and pointing the finger, and that was a long time ago. And everybody used to say, after that, and we passed the emergency levy, they used to ask me, well, how are the school board meetings? And I would tell them, they're actually pretty boring now because for months, we had people coming and screaming at each other, and we thought we were going to have an all-out riot. But after we passed those levies, and we were going through that, my daughter came up to me again, and she said, do you regret volunteering and then getting appointed on the school board? And I said, you know, Kara, at some point, I'm going to realize it was either the dumbest thing I ever did or the smartest thing I ever did. And 10 years later, I know it was the smartest thing I ever did. I'm proud of the work we did, and, you know, you're in great hands. Thank you.
The question I used to always get when I was on the board is, you know, why do you want to be on the school board? And the current board members and the future board members are going to learn that it's not for the pay. I think I worked it out one time. It's like $3 an hour. It's not for the status, especially back 10 years ago when we had armed security at the meetings, and we had death threats when we were trying to fix a problem somebody else created. Why, the reason we do it is because we care about the community, and that's what's important. And I think everybody here, not just us up on the board, but all the administrators, the teachers, the support staff, everyone, that's why we do what we do. When I look back at what we've accomplished and what we've started to accomplish, one of the things I'm really excited about, and hopefully the board moves forward with, is the idea of utilizing our great staff, teachers, administrators, to, in a way that does more than what the traditional school district does. And it leverages those abilities to create additional revenue for our school district, which does wonderful things. It'll create better opportunities for our teachers, more revenue to be able to pay our teachers, more opportunities for our students, lower tax burden for our taxpayers. And that's something I hope we're just in the infancy of, and I hope that continues as part of the strategy for the district. But the thing I'm most proud of is what just happened a little year ago in coordination with negotiating with the MTA. And what that is, is the incentive pay program. You know, not a lot of people know about me. My dad was a high school teacher for many years and was a union rep. I have a brother who's a teacher, two sisters who are a teacher, and they work hard, just like most of our teachers do. And what frustrated people is over time, you look back and you go, and everybody knows that teacher that not only teaches, but is really a mentor. And they're working 20 hours a day, not just working, going to little kids' baseball games because they're in their class, helping them with some non-classroom work, being a great role model for them. And 20 years later, they're making the exact same amount of money as another teacher who basically showed up every day. And I'm excited because I agree with the proposition that teachers are not paid enough. And I think that incentive plan, what it does is it allows our great teachers to make a lot of money, not a little bit. We're talking over a career, if you're one of the better teachers, making $100,000 or more over your career than what the old plan was. And that is exciting for me. It really motivates people to want to be recognized for the work they do. And I hope that continues because that is what will push this district forward is by being the new guys on the block, doing things different than we did it in the past. Because the biggest challenge we have as a district, and the biggest challenge any school district in the state of Ohio, is the finances. The education is there. We got the great teachers and administrators. The school board doesn't have to do much with that. It's managing the strategy to generate the revenue to be able to carry out what those teachers and administrators want to do. And that's what I'm most excited about. And there's a little sense of comfort when people say, well, what did you feel like on election night when you didn't win? And I say, you know, there's something nice about saying, you came in at the darkest time, and you're leaving when it's pretty bright. I think there's a lot more brightness ahead, but there's a certain sense of comfort that I get out of that. So I want to thank everybody who not only voted for me, but people who reappointed me to the board so I could help. And to the new board, to the existing board that's coming back over. You need anything from me? Just ask. That's all I can say. So thank you.
Thank you both for that. I do want everybody to know that we started a new Mentor tradition tonight with Mr. Wilson's assistance and Mrs. Spehak. We started a new Mentor tradition for Cardinal Achievement Award. And so these are our first two recipients of this award. So congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay. Moving on to Item 7 on the agenda, the Chief Financial Officer's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Wilson.
It's recommended the financial statements for the month of November 2013 be accepted and placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended that the investment transactions listed in Exhibit 7-B be approved.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-C be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibits 7-D be approved.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
It's recommended the student activity purpose goals and budgets as presented in Exhibit 7-E be approved.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
That completes my report for this evening. If we could, that would be nice, yes.
My apologies. We needed to vote on the resolution to accept it as a board. And I should have known that, and I apologize. So I'll take a motion to accept the resolutions, recognizing Mr. Mihawk and Mr. Sparassia.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Sparassia?
I think I need to abstain from that.
You can say yes, Drew. You deserve it.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any unfinished business? I don't believe so. Any new business? Hearing of the public, the second hearing of the public on any issue anyone would like to address. Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sparassia?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes. I don't anticipate any further activity, so when we come back after executive session, we will adjourn the meeting. So thank you all very much.